It's Thursday, January the 10th, 2019. Regular meeting of the City Planning and Zoning Board will come to order, and we'll start off with preliminary matters. Jason, are you -- have any change, additions, corrections? Anything from the panel at all?
Uh, just that we don't have the minutes right now.
That's correct. So we --
They'll be on your next -- that's your next meeting.
All right, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
The next thing we have then is what we call public comment, and this is a time where you can speak on either one of the issues that are proposed for today, or you can speak on any other topic you'd like to. On the other hand, you can wait till we're addressing that particular subject matter, and you can come up at that time. Under the quasi-judicial ones, you have to be sworn in, and so I'm just giving you an input now. So now I'm opening up public comment for those that have any general comments, or if you wish to comment anything at all, you're willing to come to the podium and speak today.
I have something.
Come to the podium, sir. And you have to give us your name.
My name is Tim Adams. I work for Indian River Mosquito Control District. The only reason I'm up here is we have interest in the proposed property that you guys are going to be working on. We just need access to it.
Is his microphone on?
I'm sorry, can you hear me?
Yeah, thank you.
I'll speak up. The property which you guys are putting the tower on, we currently have trails in there to control mosquito breeding. I've got maps of this. We just need to maintain access during construction to control the mosquito population. That's my only concern.
Is this quasi-judicial?
This -- he is allowed to speak at this time, but he would be better off speaking during the quasi-judicial portion of the meeting.
That's fine. Thank you, we heard you. But if you would like to stay, you'll be officially put in during that time. Anybody else like to come forward now to speak? Okay. And then we'll move into the first matter, which happens to be quasi-judicial. And it's a site plan application submitted by Crown Castle USA for the construction of a 195-foot mobile wireless communication tower located between 17th Street and 18th Street west of Indian River Boulevard. And the number on this one is SP1800007. So, um, is there any -- we have to have, um, is there any quasi-judicial information disclosure by planning and zoning board members ex parte communications? Do we have any?
I have none.
None.
And this also needs to be done if there were any site visits? Disclosure of both communications and site visits?
No, but I go by regularly, and why would I disclose that?
Yeah, I have to disclose that as well, that I'm over the bridge multiple times a day and pass both sites.
Same thing, I travel by the site frequently.
Next is swearing of applicants.
If you're gonna testify, you please stand and raise your right hand.
If you're gonna speak on this, please stand and raise your hand.
And this includes any members of the public who wish to testify or speak on this matter. Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth to help you God?
Yes.
Thank you.
Any exhibits or anything like that anybody's gonna bring forward, please pass them Staff presentation, opening statement. Jason, are you gonna do it, or is Gail gonna do it?
I'll have Gail, since she did the report, she'll do the presentation.
All right, Gail.
The request is for site plan approval for conditional use to allow the construction of a non-stealth facility for wireless communication. The reason they're doing this is the relocation of the existing tower that's at the city's power plant that's going to be decommissioned. They're proposing 195-foot non-stealth communication tower, and as stated, it's south of 18th Street, north 17th Street, between Indian River Boulevard and Fifth Avenue. And it does require a public hearing for approval. And you'll see that there's the site map locations in your packet. And because it's a major site plan review, there was a neighborhood meeting required. The only people in attendance were people involved with the project. No one from the public came. Requires application review by staff, and then the planning and zoning board approval. The future land use is residential medium, and if you look at the next page, you'll see the site is owned POI. And the site plan, the non-stealth communication is -- facility is a conditional use in the POI zoning district. It meets the setbacks height and landscaping requirements. It is going to be secured with an eight-foot tall fence. The FAA reviewed the project and determined that there was no substantial adverse effect on navigable airspace, that the structure must be marked with lights. And with the site design standards, the layout of the driveways, the access roadway, that there won't be a problem with any surrounding properties. And that the -- with the development standards, the exterior lighting would not be an issue with surrounding properties because it's heavily vegetated. And with the conditional use standards, it's 195-foot, it's allowed up to 199-foot as a conditional use. It will be -- it is adjacent to commercial and multifamily zoning. It's going to be buffered with landscaping. There's a requirement that it be 1,275 feet from State Road 60, which exceeds that. It -- the fall zone radius for the tower is 46 feet, and they're providing 50 feet for setback instead. And got the, um, if you see on page seven, with the existing tower, the coverage, the purple circle. And without the tower, there's gonna be a gap in service for, um, a good portion of the city, including the barrier island. Staff recommendation, we recommend approval of the site plan with the conditions, no surface water runoff during construction inspections, right-of-way permit needs to be provided, provide public works with a notice of commencement, and tree removal application needs to be in compliance, and a FEMA elevations certificate needs to be provided at the end of the project.
Questions of staff?
A few, thank you. Just, there's going to be three wireless communication services, is that the way it is now?
The code requires at least three, and that's what they're gonna provide. Right now, I believe they have one, but there's space for two more.
Okay, because on the map that was in the back of our backup here, it shows that a proposed future carrier lease area on a future platform. Now, is that for one? Do you have to build more?
No.
This is on the overall site plan, C2. Does another one have to be built for other leasing purposes?
That might be a better question for the applicant. They would know more details in terms of the function of their -- the towers. So I would defer to the applicant to answer that question.
Okay.
Quick question, Mr. Chair. You just used the term "towers." How many are we approving?
Tower, one tower.
You said "towers."
I'm sorry, I missed --
How many?
One tower.
Three leases.
Three leases, one tower.
All right, on this site, how many towers will be put up?
One tower, that's what you have in front of you.
Can you put more on the site?
I don't --
There would not be --
I don't believe there'd be room for that.
No, there wouldn't be room for that.
So the answer to my question is, this site will only hold the one tower?
It has one tower with the ability to have three providers on, hanging on it.
But the site will not take another tall tower of 195-foot?
No, no.
So the site's for one tower only?
That's correct.
Okay.
Gail, I have a couple of questions for you. There's an existing tower on the site, is that correct?
Not on this site, there's an existing -- the power plant.
Nearby?
Yes.
That tower will come down?
That tower will come down.
Is there a time parameters with one comes down, one goes up, as is proposed?
I am not aware of when the power plant is being decommissioned.
I don't think we have a timeline on that.
No.
And the reason?
I would suggest that once we can make a condition, that once the new tower is built, they have to remove the old tower.
That was where I was headed. I don't see why we'd need to, other than the transition period between one coming down and the other being activated, okay?
Right.
So, all right.
So that's something that we should consider, moving this forward?
I would like --
You don't have to, but you could consider that if you would.
Gail, the picture that we received, is this -- I'm gonna ask the applicant also, of a tower on the property and how it would look from this particular location?
That's correct, yeah.
Is that an -- do we know if that's an accurate depiction of what it's gonna look like as far as the top apparatus? Because my biggest thing I've seen is some have major apparatuses at the top, and others have seemed -- the newer ones seem like they have more modest apparatuses attached to the top. And I use that because I don't understand the terminology we're talking about here.
Um, it's my understanding that that's what we're reviewing and approving, what's --
So this is the only -- we don't, other than these drawings, which it takes a person with a little more education and certain areas of engineering that I don't have, to define what the tower at the top actually looks like?
Uh, just what's in the site plan is what --
But it doesn't give me much detail. I mean, it talks about more on the ground, what the fencing looks like, the landscaping looks like, the entries look like, and --
You do have an elevation of the --
Correct.
Of the tower, not just the picture, but if you look at its drawing, C-5.
I saw that.
And you'll see it has three levels of, I guess, apparatus.
I saw that, too.
Right, and then if you look at the picture that they've superposed on the -- they're showing three, so they're depicting it as -- they're depicting it in the graphic elevation the same way they're showing it on that C5.
And the picture we have is simulated, okay?
Right.
But the actual drawings here, it's hard to determine by myself, because we're only using a scale, okay? And even that scale is undefined in some respects. I have a hard time getting a true perspective on what the top of the tower is going to look like, and how prevalent it's going to be into our community.
That would probably be a good question for the applicant.
I wanna know what we know, though, first.
Right.
I will tell you that the new tower is proposed at 195 feet, and the tower that's currently at the power plant is 208.
208, so it's shorter.
It's a little shorter.
But we don't know the size of the top, that's what we'll try to get some definition on.
Yeah, where do you start the measuring from, the road?
Um, this is in flood zone, so it would be at the flood zone elevation, which is, it's in AE5, so it would be from five.
From five.
But it would be at ground level, once it's elevated out of the base flood elevation.
Okay, okay.
They have standard baseline. Additional questions from staff?
Probably.
Okay. I think I understand all the overlaps and et cetera for the area to cover to get reception.
Can you, Gail, give us the historical on the original tower? When was it constructed?
That came before us, I think.
That, I don't have that information here.
And it is attached to the building, is that correct?
I believe it's on the roof.
On the roof.
That's my belief.
Okay.
On the landscaping around the property, are there any protections to the existing shrubbery plants?
Well, there was a tree survey done, and it's pretty much all invasive exotic species.
Yeah.
So it's just a lot of things that aren't protected by the tree protection ordinance.
Mm-hmm. I'm reminded of when we had 9/11. There'd been such an objection in the community about the power plant being unattractive. And so beautiful plantings went up, so if you're driving by, you see the plantings, you don't see the power plant. And then with 9/11 comes orders from the government about, you have got to get rid of that planting because it doesn't allow the security of that site, so everything went down. Do we have anything similar, looking out for, you know, these kinds of cell towers?
No.
So there's no real regulations as far as?
Just that there has to be landscaping around the area.
Uh-huh, okay. And would it be in such a manner as to protect the -- I noticed with the lighting, that was important, but at some point, does it become important that we should have something in this ordinance now to say that the landscaping must be maintained, such as?
It is in the code that you have to maintain the landscaping for any approved --
To protect the neighborhoods.
That's correct.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, I have a question.
Go ahead, sir.
For staff, what is the diameter at the bottom of the tower?
That would be a good question for the applicant.
We don't have that in the plan.
That's not a criteria we review.
Okay, because a follow-up question, from the base of the tower to any residential units, what is the distance?
The required setback is --
No, I just wanna know what is the distance from the base of the tower to any residential unit?
That I don't know. There's multifamily to the zoning district to the west of it, and it looks like it -- the property line is 179 feet.
So it'd be 179 foot to the base of the tower?
From --
The residential unit?
The base of the tower to -- well, the property that's owned for multifamily development.
And that's not my question, and I don't wanna pressure you. My question is this, I wanted to know from the base of the tower to a residential unit, it could be an apartment building, a house unit, to the -- in other words, from the base of the tower, let's use a wall, the wall of the unit, and you don't have that, thank you.
Okay.
Anybody else have questions?
I'll reserve my questions for later.
The applicant would like to come forward.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the commission. My name is Katie Cole with the law firm of Hillward Henderson, 600 Cleveland Street, Suite 800 Clearwater, Florida. And I'm here representing Crown Castle, the applicant, for this conditional use and site plan approval, together with Heather Wosnick with Crown Castle, who can answer many of your technical questions. As you saw in the application and in the staff report, this is a request for conditional use approval and site plan approval for a replacement tower. This is replacing the tower that exists on the power plant today. Approximately two and a half or three years ago, the city came to Crown Castle to inform them that not only was the lease naturally expiring, but the city actually had expedited the demolition of the power plant. We know it's still there today for things unrelated to this that have occurred over the past few years. But that got the city and Crown Castle talking about what they were going to do for cellular service in the area. The tower that's on the power plant currently serves the barrier islands and all of downtown Vero Beach, and is the 911 service link as well to those areas. So it was extremely important to replace the tower. Working with the city staff, Crown Castle identified several city-owned parcels, because the city did own this, obviously enjoyed the rental income of having a tower on its property. There were a handful of city parcels that were available or able to locate the tower on, which is in a very discreet geographic area. The towers are placed, as you can imagine, and you saw the coverage maps in the application and in your package, to maintain coverage. And so there was a limited geographic area in which the city and Crown Castle could look to identify sites. Unfortunately, because of some of the restrictions in your charter with respect to leasing long-term municipal property, and with respect to certain zoning conditions, much of the city property was parks and recreation property, which also had certain charter restrictions, the municipal property was not available. So Crown sought out other parcels that might be available within the same geographic area that could accommodate a tower. As you're aware, there are many residential parcels in this general vicinity, but not a lot of commercial or office parcels. And so working with staff and working with the city attorney's office, Crown identified this parcel, which has a POI zoning district, worked with staff over the course of the past two years. And this board heard last spring a code amendment that you all adopt, recommended approval to the commission, and the commission approved a amendment to your land development code to allow a conditional use for towers up to 200 feet in the POI zoning district. Once that was approved, the viability of a replacement tower became more likely, and Crown proceeded in earnest to make this application and negotiate with the owner of this parcel to have this application that's before you and move forward. As the staff indicated, in March, we did host a neighborhood meeting, and we were very lonely in here. And I did receive one phone call in advance of that meeting, and just answered a few questions to one neighbor. I think there's a few things that I'd like to supplement. Formally, just for the sake of a quasi-judicial hearing, I'd like to confirm that the application and all the exhibits attached thereto are entered into the record and accepted as evidence, competent substantial evidence for -- to support the application. I'd also like to confirm with the board that we concur with the staff's analysis and the evidence presented in that staff report. To answer a few of your questions, this is a five-acre parcel of land, and it has a split zoning of RM10 and POI. The portion of the parcel that is being leased to Crown Castle, and which would be utilized for the tower area compound, is what we call it, is less than a half acre. It's really only about .2 acres. So when you're looking at a five-acre site, you're talking about a very small .2-acre site in the center. It's approximately 160 -- the tower base is approximately 165 feet from the western property line, which is the closest residential property line other than on the parent parcel. Obviously, 50 feet to the north is also a RM10 zoning district. The existing tower has been at the power station since 1993. Very clearly, the tower has become part of the fabric of this community. People like to use their cell phones, utilization of the cell phones, crossing the bridges. You all said you go back and forth a lot. That's the tower that provides that. There are two towers currently at your power station. One is a T-Mobile guide tower, and one is the monopole that's there that Crown Castle owns. We expect both T-Mobile and Sprint to co-locate on the proposed new tower, so you'd have two towers being replaced with one. And the tower is constructed, from an engineering standpoint, that it could accommodate a total of four carriers. But as you can see on the elevations provided and on the photo simulation, three is a reasonable number that's proposed now, but the tower strength could hold a fourth if there was the need for a fourth. Mr. Chairman, to respond to your question, the existing tower antenna that are there is exactly the same as what would be put on this tower. Antenna technology changes as the years change and as things move forward, but what is on the existing tower, what's shown in the photo simulation on page C5, and what's shown in the elevation, is what is proposed on this tower and what the current antenna looked like. With respect to landscaping, towers are always an interesting landscaping requirement because your code, as well as very many, require a fence around the compound. And so there will be an opaque fence around the compound, and your code requires a landscape buffer. So what will happen is only that .2-acre area of land will be cleared, together with the access road. The rest of the five-acre site would remain generally in its natural vegetative state. So the buffer areas are required by your code and are shown in the application and your site plan on the landscape page, but in reality, you're going to have 100 feet of natural vegetation buffer to the west, and about 60 to the east, and then about 100 to the north, 500 to the south. So there will be a significant amount of vegetation with the tower in the middle of that site. To answer one of your other questions, there are platforms shown on the site plan. There are two platforms that are shown in solid, two shown in dashlines. Each carrier requires their own equipment platform. And so this site plan shows the two for the two carriers that have applied to be on this tower. But in the event a third or fourth carrier is added, as is required by your code for co-location, there is room for those two other platforms. Because it is in a flood zone, those platforms will need to be raised outside of base flood elevation, and they're anticipated to do so. That would all be shown on your building permits. I wanted just to talk a little bit about the height and why it is 190 feet proposed. As you can see in the coverage maps, that's always the sensitive question, is why is the tower so tall? And the height of the tower is how the carriers get their reach. And so as a tower becomes shorter, you can imagine that the circles on those coverage maps -- and I apologize, we don't have the overhead to be able to point these things out, but those circles get smaller and smaller, to the point where there's really a minimal impact of having a tower. So the 195 feet allows for similar coverage, almost duplicate coverage of what exists today on your 208-foot tower that you currently have at the power station. We -- with respect to alternative sites, there are a number of sites in your code. There are restrictions from locating towers against your major thoroughfares. Your code protects and respects the scenic corridors that exist in your community, and recognizes that in your right up close to those rights of ways and within the scenic corridors, you all do not want tall cell towers. And so it basically requires these towers to be farther away from these corridors. So once you layer on the distance requirements from the streets and your major thoroughfares, with the zoning requirements, the towers have very limited zoning categories where they could be located, there are limited opportunities in which to put a tower in your community. I'm trying to go through all your other questions. I think I responded to what you all had asked of staff earlier, but I'm happy to answer any more questions.
If you could just clarify one thing.
Absolutely.
You made a comment that this was five acres.
Mm-hmm, the master site.
I'm trying to locate where it says five acres on here. I see 3.47 acres on the records book.
Plus the RM10, right? The two together?
To which side?
To the north.
I see.
There's a little strip right on 18th to the north, and then the master parcel. Those are the same owner.
This is the whole parcel, but there were any --
Right.
This right here.
Okay, yeah, that's the RM10.
The RM10.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
So with that, I think you have all of the evidence. I do have most of the photos that you have in your packet. I don't know that I have any additional ones. We have the closest cell tower with any carrier is currently about 2.3 miles away from your existing power plant tower. And so this is only about, how much, 1,200?
1,200.
1,200 feet from your existing tower, so it's very close. So it'll still -- the closest tower to this one will still be over two miles away. Happy to answer any questions, reserve any additional time I may have to respond. I know there's some neighbors that are here who I'm sure have some questions. Happy to respond to those as well.
I have the base.
I'm going to start off then, if I may. If you want to jump ahead. The small area, the two-tenths of an acre, I believe you said it was, that you're actually using or leased from this total parcel. So you've leased two-tenths of a percent of a five-acre parcel, and that's all you have. Yet your circle of the tower above it, does it actually lean over onto the other, into the other part of the parcel? Does the up, the top of the, all the instrumentation is, is there, where the antennas are? Do they actually lean out over your property, or are they contained within the two-tenths of you have?
They're contained within the two-tenths.
Okay. And when you're, when you talk about clearing this area, you're only talking about clearing the two-tenths of an acre that you have leased. The additional four-plus acres will be, remain where the, way they are presently, and they're not under consideration today. Is that right, Gail, as far as, we can go that way, too? Okay. So they're only talking about that. So you, but you'll clear all the invasives and everything out of that two-tenths of an acre?
Correct. That two-tenths of an acre will be pretty much clear-cut. The staffs received the tree permit. There were less, a handful of non-invasive trees that will need to be removed. There's an access road on the east side of the parcel that will come from 18th Street south into the site. There's some stormwater improvements that are required, the city requires, that will be along the access road. And then the two-tenths of an acre will be cleared to provide for the compound area and the platforms.
Gail, in your backup, you mentioned, under the site plan evaluation, the compliance, that there, the code requirement to carry three wireless communication service providers. If they are to bring in a fourth, do they have to go through another process?
No.
So our code will automatically provide for a fourth one?
It's a minimum of three.
Minimum?
I mean, yes, a minimum of three, yes.
Is there a maximum?
It's not stated in the code.
It's what the tower would be capable of holding.
That's all they, I understand. Well, you know, the only thing that could make a tower worse is to put them the whole way down, but every time you go lower, you're getting less reception, too. If, if a city was to come to you and say, we'll double the height of the tower, could we have less towers in a community then, if you could get one?
Arguably.
Arguably?
Depending on, there's a whole lot of factors, but certainly, the general rule would be the taller the tower, the greater the coverage area, with an asterisk.
Mr. Chairman, I have a couple of questions, if you will. In the, in the presentation, it's mentioned that this will be a non-stealth facility. What's the difference between stealth and non-stealth towers?
Certainly. We had extensive discussion with staff about this when we were going through, a stealth tower is one that might be, have pine, look like the top of a pine tree, or might be hidden into a church steeple, something along those lines. Generally, stealth towers are shorter and aren't so tall. Mr. McGary felt very strongly that anything over 150 feet, especially up to a 200-foot tower, should not be stealth because it would look rather ridiculous to have a 195-foot pine tree in the middle of a, in the middle of a lot. So that's the distinction. So a non-stealth tower, this code and this proposed tower is a monopole as opposed to a guide tower. So you won't see lattice or anything. It's a solid pole that comes up out of the ground, out of the plat, out of the platform, solid pole with the antenna around it.
Once the power plant structure is raised and that tower is removed, do you know what the next highest elevation pole or tower might be in that same area?
If you'll give me a moment to flip through my exhibits here. This question came up before, and I handwrote all of that information on an exhibit. Do you have it right there?
I do.
Yes, there you go. There's a 145-foot monopole, which is five miles away on Southwest 58th Avenue, and there's a 118-foot flagpole that's 3.6 miles away on 43rd Avenue.
I was more interested in this neighborhood.
There's, the closest tower is two and a, the closest tower is two and a half miles away. The two, the one that's 2.3 miles away is a 477-foot guide tower, and there's another 290-foot guide tower that's also 2.3 miles away. So the two closest towers are over 400 feet tall.
Okay. Can you tell me, it's been mentioned that the, that the surroundings, surrounding the site will be heavily vegetated, will be maintained as heavily vegetated, but the balance of that acreage that's part of this consideration is made up of invasive plants primarily, number one, and number two, there's no guarantee it won't be developed in the future. So where is the heavily vegetated condition remaining?
Certainly, and, and that's a good, a good point. So the, the application before you is only for the .2-acre site. And so the remainder of the site will remain in its natural condition. If and when an applicant comes forward for the redevelopment of the balance of the site, those would be things that you would need to consider.
Correct.
Yes.
So it's conditional upon whatever the future holds?
Correct.
Let's see if I have a question here. I'll yield to...
I have additional questions. Fall, fall zone, that doesn't mean if a 195-foot tall pole, you think it'd fall 190, but you said fall zone's 40, is that because the guides kind of keep it from moving beyond a certain distance in what you call the fall zone, and it's 46 feet?
This is, this is not a guide tower, so there aren't guides to keep it.
No.
Mm-mm. So the breakpoint, the towers are engineered with what's called breakpoint technology, and so they actually engineer a spot at 46 feet. So if there were a tower failure, that is where it would break.
Okay, I wasn't sure of that, that's what I wanted to know. So that's why it can't fall 196 feet away?
Correct.
Okay.
And based on the fall zone letter and the engineering letter provided to the city and submitted as part of the application and in evidence to you in support of this application, it shows that the first 150 feet of the tower are constructed in a manner to withstand over hurricane-force winds that were not anticipated to ever have a failure of the first 150 feet. It's not until the tower starts to get thinner that it would potentially fail, and that's where the breakpoint comes in.
Gail, the subdivision that we have approved for an apartments member just recently here, where is it? I can't pick that out.
It's directly west.
It's directly west?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
It's the parcel that's 160 feet away from the base of the tower.
So that is the part, that, when we, just, okay, thank you.
And they received notice on the neighborhood meeting?
Oh, yes, when it was advertised and they had...
Yes, I saw they had, yeah.
And nobody showed up at your meeting from public to speak?
No.
Other than one phone call you received, correct?
I did receive one phone call. And we actually sent it twice because the first list...
Screwed up.
Well, we received the list from the city. And when we...
I'll blame it on the city.
When we, when we sent the letter, I pulled it up and I thought it was an unusual, unusually lean list, and so we went back and reran it to be sure to include a broader area, which is why we sent the second letter as well. And I also think it was misidentified, kind of because of where the parcel was.
Right.
Any additional questions, the applicant?
I don't think so at this time. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We'd now like to open it up to the public to have comments on this particular application. So if you'd like to speak and you have been sworn in, please come to the microphone and you can speak now.
My name is Phil Watts, and I live on 18th Street, which is very close to this property that we're discussing today. I do have a few questions that are not answered, and I'd like to address them at this point. You said the area was clear-cut around the area of the pole?
Do you want me to engage in a debate?
No. He needs to direct the questions to the council. If they're not able to answer it, then the staff, the applicant can rebut afterwards.
Phil, I'm going to try to reiterate what I believe, and I'll look for correction on my statement. The two-tenths of an acre that they're going to put this tower on is going to be clear-cut.
Okay.
And the remainder of the site, the additional 4.8 acres, will be left as it is right now, temporarily. Now, that doesn't just say sometimes somebody will develop that in the future and do whatever they anticipate doing to that area.
My, the reason that I asked this...
Sure, I'm correct. Am I correct?
Yes, you're correct. The reason that I asked this question is, does that become a fire hazard if there was ever a tower fire? If that, if that is combustible material that's left on the ground and there is a tower fire, which they do happen infrequently, is that area going to burn out of control until the fire department gets there?
Don't have any idea on that one.
Okay.
I think I'll have to go with, I don't know who to go to on that one.
I don't believe that's a criteria that...
I did, there's no...
Well, the only thing I would say when it comes to fire safety, that, that would be reviewed as part of the building permit. That's going to be part of the county building department's review.
They, that's right, combustible materials on the building itself and in the tower.
I mean, there'd be a fire, I mean, that's all part of, whenever you get a building permit, there's, there's fire safety review on construction.
I'm not sure of that, Phil. I, I'm taking what the gentleman said, but I don't know.
Okay. If it's going to be looked at at a later date, then...
For the building permit, not through the zoning process, okay?
Okay. The other question I have is radiation patterns. Is there any printed radiation pattern that I could look at?
Can the applicant come up and answer that question, please?
There is not any printed radiation, and actually, the federal statute prohibits local governments from considering any type of radiation patterns in its zoning decisions with respect to towers. It's an express prohibition in the...
Not, but my attorney agrees with you, okay?
But I, but we're certain in the FCC guidelines. It's certainly within the FCC guidelines to, and would not exceed the FCC guidelines.
Are the beams...
We have to go back to the microphone, sir.
Okay. I'd like to know if the beams are focused, or is it just a pulse of energy that comes out in an equal area? Or is it, is the antenna tuned to any certain areas?
Come back, you, Michael, stay up there a moment until we get all this clarified.
They are directional antennas, and so at that height, they're specified into the area where they're connecting.
And these are addressing issues that are not part of the criteria for, that's in the county's ordinance for land development. So the, take that as part of your consideration towards competent substantial evidence.
I believe, I believe I'm going to let these questions go forward, though. I think they're, I think the public would like to know, and if they do, I'd like to know. Go ahead.
The other question I have is noise pollution from the equipment. Is there going to be a generator on-site that will be operating either, either fully or partially? Is there any kind of a problem that it's going to create for a quiet neighborhood like mine that is very close to this area? And my other question, was the monopole being guided or not? And I believe it's already been answered, so.
As any, any of the members of the panel would like, have questions of Phil Watson? Is that correct?
Watts, W-A-T-S.
I'm sorry, Watts, forgive me. Thank you, Phil.
No, thank you.
Now, if you'd like to respond to those last two with the generator?
Certainly. The carriers have not proposed generators in their equipment platforms that we know of yet when they come in for building permit. We'll see, but any generators would be within the kilowatt allowance for, in your zoning code and in your code of ordinances, and would not exceed that.
Most of the time, they're drawing from the normal power source.
Correct.
This would only be an emergency situation where the power breaks down, they would come on.
Yes, sir.
But they'd have to be a pretty good-sized generator to keep that. I don't know what your power usage is, but it sounds like it could be a pretty good-sized generator.
It's actually pretty low.
Well, they have them in most communities, a lot of communities have them now, too. I know one across from my children's home, they have a community generator to keep the sewage pumps pumping to their lift stations and things, so.
The power use of a tower is fairly low, so any generator use would be fairly low as well.
Thank you. Additional, members of the public like to come forward? If you would, please do so now. Seeing nobody else coming forward, I'm going to close public comment.
There was the map that you had with the mosquito control?
Yes.
That's okay, I'd like that.
He provided it to me, and we will certainly work with them to accommodate.
Right, yeah. I did provide the map to this lady right here, and I've got copies, if you guys would like copies as well. It's just, we just need to maintain access for treating mosquitoes in that area.
I think we might like to, I'm going to suggest if there's any motion, that we put that within our motion, unless there's some reason I shouldn't.
No, I agree. That needs to be part of the motion.
Okay. And if you would, I don't know how to define it yet.
May I ask, is how do you have, do you have authority of the property owner to have those trails?
No, I believe it's kind of a grandfathered-in thing that we've been treating these places for years upon years.
I would be concerned about putting that condition in because this property owner may or may not have authorized this. And, and like we said, we will definitely work to make sure that there isn't an issue, but not knowing how their authority to be on that property, I don't want to condition...
So he doesn't have an right to go on and spray or keep...
I, I don't know.
I do know we're covered under the chapter 388, and that, that allows us access for anything that's nuisance-based and potentially dangerous to the public. And that's where usually we, we fall under.
That agreement's really between the property owner and this gentleman right, or the mosquito control group?
Correct. It is more about that, their relationship.
Not something we should be involved in?
At this point, no.
Yeah. I, I don't foresee a problem. I just wanted it stated that we have interest in the property, and we're going to need to have access to treat and maintain it, because otherwise their workers are going to be miserable, and so is everybody else in the neighborhood.
Based on what my legal people advise, I don't believe it'll be a part of any motion.
I don't think it would.
And I think you should maybe contact or get permanent permission to go on that property from the local, from the landowner.
What was the chapter you cited that covers you all? Chapter 388. Chapter 388, okay. Let the...
That's county?
Yeah. I believe so.
And thank you for that information. It's important.
Thank you.
Is there any closing arguments by the applicant? Do you have any closing arguments?
Just a couple of points. One, I'd like to thank staff and Mrs. Hauntz. This has been a very long process to come to the right site with the right tower at the right height, trying to maintain the E911 services that exist in your community and the cellular services in the community. And we appreciate that cellular towers are sensitive in nature. They're obviously sensitive to neighbors. We appreciate you coming out, and we understand that. The natural vegetation, to your point, if it does in, come back with the parent parcel to be redeveloped, and that's impacted, the code requires, and your site, the site plan that you're approving today, does include the required buffer around the compound itself. So there is a buffer around the compound absent the natural vegetation which currently exists. So there is some protection relative to that. With respect to the location and relocation of the existing tower, the power plant, we would not anticipate anything more than 90 to 120 days to move the carriers from the old tower to the new tower. It takes time to build the tower, for them to move their, move their antenna, test it to make sure that the frequencies work and that there are no issues, and then remove the existing tower. So that's generally standard, and I believe your ordinance has an obligation, that the city has the right to step in to remove the old tower if for some reason it's not timely removed as well. So that is something that your ordinance already addresses. So we appreciate your consideration. As this is a quasi-judicial hearing, I would not be doing my job if I didn't remind you that the competent substantial evidence that's been... that the competent substantial evidence that's been submitted to the record is in support of this application. It goes through both the site plan criteria as well as the conditional use criteria. There has not been any opposing evidence presented to you today that, that does not meet the criteria if your code, which is the burden that you're faced with considering today. So with that, we greatly appreciate your consideration and your approval of this project. Thank you.
Thank you. Any closing comments from our staff?
None, unless you have any additional questions.
Just, could I, if I could just clarify one thing, Larry? They have like 90 days from the time if the original goes down now at the power plant, 90 days to build the other or how does that work?
There's no time, we didn't, I don't think we set a time, did we, honey?
No, we, we talked about making it a condition that we've, when one is removed, the other one is up.
Right, you would definitely want to have the one exist, the, the new one in operation before you remove the old one. I believe, I don't have the lease in front of me, but I would imagine that our lease says something that once that one becomes inoperable, that they have a certain timeframe that they have to get it down.
They have to.
Isn't that beyond our, our approval process though to talk about those time parameters though?
Yes, more-
I mean, I don't know how we can incorporate that into or make it a part of, as far as I know. Diva?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, um, thank you.
I could see a lot of people being very concerned with an interruption in-
Service.
Service.
I'll have a wife.
It's a big deal when you look at this map.
Bull in my head.
And one thing I'll say, as she mentioned, the FCC, they are, have become more and more tying the hands of communities and being able to restrict where these things go. So I think we have an opportunity here to do the best that we can and if we delay anything, more likely than not, the FCC will come in and say you have to put it there anyways.
I think it's kind of like the fire hydrant that sits in the middle of my front yard. It's a necessity, it's got to be there. And even though I tried to paint it green, they painted it yellow again, so I don't know. All right, comments by our members here? Steve, you have a comment?
No.
Honey?
No, I'm fine.
And I'm looking for a proposal.
Okay, I remove that we accept staff's recommendation.
No modifications to it?
No.
Okay. You have a second from Steve?
Yes.
Ready for a vote?
Yes.
Mr. Dag?
Yes.
Mr. Kahoy?
Yes.
Mr. Lauer?
Yes.
Mrs. Manous?
Yes.
Mr. Lafer?
Yes.
Passes five to zero.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
If we wouldn't have had the tower blow up, there would have been so many people killing us, we wouldn't have been standing. The next item on our agenda is an ordinance of the City of Vero Beach, Florida relating to the Tree Replacement Fund amending Title VII, Land Development, Chapter 72, Landscaping and Tree Protection, Section 72.43, I, parentheses, I, or one.
If you could take any conversations to the foyer?
Excuse us, you'll take that outside, please? Thank you. I'm going to start again because, "An ordinance of the City of Vero Beach, Florida relating to the Tree Replacement Fund, amending Title VII, Land Development, Chapter 72, Landscaping and Tree Protection, Section 72.43 of the Code of the City of Vero Beach, providing for codification, providing for conflict and severability, and providing for an effective date." This item was tabled the last time on December 20th, hoping that we would have some people here from the beautification people. This is a legislative matter, it's not quasi judicial. And we'll start by a presentation from Gail and see, no, we're not going to do a presentation per se?
The staff, I will.
You're going to be staff this morning?
I will be staff.
Way to go, Mr. Director. You go ahead and proceed.
Sure. As you mentioned, this was tabled from the last meeting. You have the same memo that was in your last packet in, in this packet. In addition, I did include the entire Section 72.43, so you see the context of the mitigation section of the Land Development Code for the tree and, tree and palm protection. And what I'll do is just go, for the record, just go through my similar presentation I did at the last meeting, which is a, the request is to amend Chapter 72, Article 4, which is the tree and palm protection section. It's a request from the Tree and Beautification Board. They were requesting to essentially expand the use of tree replacement funds for installation of planting costs related to trees. The process, this, it was a board request, this request did go through a staff analysis between myself, the planning staff, and the legal department. We did do some amendments and I'll, or some changes to the proposed amendment to the code that were requested from the Tree and Beautification Board. This does require Planning Board, uh, recommendation to City Council since this is an amendment to the Land Development Code. And ultimately, City Council will make the final decision. This, in terms of the staff review analysis, the City of Vero Beach is a Tree City USA. There's four core standards. There's one to have a tree board, have a tree ordinance, a certain percent spending on urban forestry, and celebrating Arbor Day. The justification for the amendment is to expand the use of the tree replacement fund for installation and planting costs related to trees. The proposed language, staff did feel was a little too broad, so we made some changes to it, what you see in the draft ordinance. And we recommend those revisions to the amendment. Based on those recommend, those revisions to the proposed amendment, we do believe the purpose of the amendment is justified. In terms of the consistency with the comprehensive plan, there is, within the comprehensive plan, there is the conservation objective five, which is native vegetation, which requires in Policy 5.1, that the city shall enforce provisions of the tree protection regulations and evaluate effectiveness of the, these regulations in terms of protection of native vegetative communities balanced with the rights of property owners. And also, there's Policy 5.3, the city should promote the use of native vegetation in the LDC and require removal of invasive species. The proposed ordinance is consistent with the comprehensive plan. And then, in terms of the consistency with the existing land development regulations, our finding this is consistent with our adopted LDC and the Tree USA program guidelines. Within your staff report, you do have the proposed language, which is essentially to amend the, add in language that allow costs related, cost directly related to tree planting and the installation of tree related irrigation systems. So I think that gets to the objectives that the Tree and Beautification Board has, but we just kind of streamlined the language. We did leave in, they were requesting to remove the language regarding using of the funds for mitigation for invasive species. We feel that's not consistent with the, with the, the city's comprehensive plan, which requires the, the promotion of native vegetation and the removal of invasive species. So our, the staff recommendation continues to be to recommend the approval of the revised text amendment that's placed before you in the ordinance. This is a legislative hearing.
Correct me if I'm wrong, removing invasive vegetation right now was always been a part of this.
It's currently part of the-
And you are recommending we take that part out?
No, no, no.
I'm sorry.
The Tree and the Beautification Board had requested in their initial motion to remove that language in the current lang, in the current code. Staff's recommendation is to leave it in.
Okay, that's, I'm sorry, I, my clarification then, okay.
And again, our just, staff justification is because of the comprehensive plan and staying consistent with the adopted policies in the, in the comprehensive plan.
I think that seems rational. Whether they want to spend it on that's up to them. I mean, they can never spend any on that if they choose to do so and that's their discretion.
Right.
Recommend what they do, what they need to do. Questions of staff?
I have no problem with this.
On, where are we? E2, replacement of protective palms. Multiple approved replacement palms meeting the requirements of this section may be installed to satisfy the DVAH replacement. And then going into number three, if, if, for instance, if it requires a nine foot tree, are you suggesting now we can use three, three foot trees?
There's no changes to that provision of the code.
There isn't, okay.
No, the only part, the, the only reason we provided the, the complete code section was so that you would be aware of how it fits into the proposed ordinance. There are no other changes other than what's in the proposed ordinance. But there were some questions last time because we only took that one paragraph out about how it related to the entirety.
Mitigation, yes.
Okay.
At the last meeting, you had questions regarding the mitigation.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
And I provided as backup the entire mitigation section, so you understand where this fits into it.
Okay, thank you, thank you.
So we're not suggesting any change to any other section at this point.
Okay, so the only thing is the-
Just how the money will be spent.
Yeah, okay.
So, oh man, in section two, I guess it is, of the ordinance recommendation, under, I guess it is, where you've underlined, let's put it that way, "Costs directly related to the tree planting installation of tree related irrigation systems." That is new.
Yes, the underlying language is new.
And the other was taken out, okay.
Yeah.
So the anything we, that's one of the few questions that we have, do we want, is there, if they seem, seem to think that's necessary, but-
I'll let the tree, really the chairman or the vice chair of the Beautification Board is here to speak to it, but my understanding is that there were questions about the ability to use the tree mitigation funds for other costs related to, not just planting the tree. I think staff at one point was taking a very strict interpretation that the funds can only be used for the tree itself. The Beautification Board request is to be a little broader, which is all costs related to planting the tree, including irrigation, which is justified because just buying the tree-
What I don't understand is it permanent irrigation or is it temporary irrigation?
It can be either, as long as it's directly related to the tree costs.
Okay.
I mean, you can't use it to make an irrigation system for flowers or other-
Yeah, okay.
Good afternoon. My name is Marilyn Black DeSault and I am the Vice Chair of the Tree and Beautification Commission. I first apologize, I did not realize that we were to be here at your meeting on December 20th. I wouldn't have been able to be here because I wouldn't, wasn't here, but I am, I do apologize. I would have made arrangements to make sure someone was here to answer your questions. In, with respect to the language, I, I can see that it's difficult to understand, so let's just think about what we do. When someone wants to develop a property and there are trees that person wants to take down, they have a choice. They can leave them there and replan, or they can pay money and kill the tree. Well, we're looking to offer still an alternative to that and that is that if in fact there is a tree which can be saved, rather than the developer paying the money into the fund, the developer removes the tree and plants it or puts it in a place depending upon the ball of the tree or what's required, but puts it on a place where we can maintain it and irrigate it, save the tree and perhaps offer it to someone else who can use it. In other words, we're just trying desperately to not kill trees for money. It's like an insurance policy. You gotta die to get the money and we don't want to kill the tree if we don't have to.
Okay.
That's all it is.
In order to do that, we would actually need to do, make other revisions to the code because you would have to be able to give the developer, the property owner, that option. That currently isn't what is there.
I'm, I'm-
So if that is what your intent is, that is not what was conveyed in the ordinance as, as approved by your board.
Right, but this was our starting point. We had to make sure that the first step was to understand what it was that we wanted to do. There is no question that when you do, I, I am an attorney, so there's no question that when you do anything legislatively, we know it's a web, that we then have to go branch out and figure out where else some changes would have to be made. It seemed logical that this would be the first place since in fact, the Planning Board deals with our mitigation fund. That's why it was brought the way it was.
I, I understand that, but we, rather than piecemeal changing the mitigation section, which is what we provided to you as the entire section, that we would, should probably consider, okay, if we do want to give this third option to developers of saving a tree and giving it to the city to plant temporarily in a location until we can give it to somebody else, that would need to be, should be incorporated along with this, not just this little change and do it, you know, do all the changes to this particular section.
That's not in this though?
Correct, that's not, that was never conveyed to the planning staff or myself that that was the intent of what they were actually trying to do.
Well, I think if you go back and look at the minutes of our meetings where we discussed this at length on several occasions-
Yeah, but we didn't, I didn't-
I understand, but that really was always the intent and we were, we were advised that this was the best way to go. Hence, I, I don't want to take up your time unnecessarily, I'm just telling you what we were advised in terms of this being the best way to go.
Ma'am, did you read what is before us today?
Sure.
How do you feel about it?
I'm, I'm fine.
Would you like to see it go through as, as it sits before us?
Absolutely, because it essentially embodies exactly what we are talking about.
Because I hear you loud and clear, just want to make sure what we're moving forward here, when you go back and report to your board, this is a, kind of along the lines of what you guys are looking for.
Absolutely, sir.
Okay, thanks.
One of the questions we had at the last meeting was why the provision regarding removal of invasive plants was stricken from the-
Well, because the removal of invasive plants, as I understand it, was not always there as part of the tree mitigation fund. It was put in, in April of, of this past year with respect to the tree mitigation fund and if it cannot be removed, then so be it, it cannot be removed. It is simply that when we look at both the state, the federal and county laws with respect to removal of invasive plants, especially the pepper tree plant, it is a very, very expensive proposition and one that, because this is such a highly generative plant, that if one berry falls and blows, it, it can generate. And so my concern when I looked at this was that the, the amount in the fund would be used up completely by any large scale removal. However, if in fact it is already in the plan, there's nothing we can do and we accept that part. And I have already spoken with the planning director about it.
You don't have to allocate funds for it, you can work around it and never put a dollar out to do that.
Well-
That's my belief, only.
Yeah, I, I think, I think that is, I think in, in theory, that is absolutely right, but we haven't tested it and quite frankly, I'd like to keep it that way, but nonetheless.
Do you know why the provision was put in last paper?
I do not, I have not read the minutes and, and-
I just want to clarify one thing. The, the ordinance, the last, the last amendment to this particular section of the Land Development Code is in 2013. So, but in April, I believe what you might be referring to is the adoption of the comprehensive plan, which I referred to, that's in the comprehensive plan. I'd have to do more research because I know there's, was that added in at, through this most recent comprehensive plan process or has that been in previous comprehensive plans? But it's obviously adopted policy of- But it's obviously adopted policy of the city, meaning that it was adopted through the comprehensive plan.
At this point, the reasoning behind it for our purposes here is moot. It's a totally different issue. But the reason that we raised it is simply because in researching all of the costs that is associated with removing these invasive plants, our concern was that we would, our fund would be gone, if you will, and we wouldn't be able to maintain what we need to maintain to stay as a Tree City USA, which we've been for 37 years and we're very proud of. That's, that's my answer.
Okay, we just didn't have an answer last time.
Right.
It's one of the reasons we came forward.
I understand, and I appreciate that.
Yeah. It's good to know why it came forward.
Thank you. If there's any other questions?
Yes, I think I have to open up the public now for public comment.
Well, she was part of the public, so you can more formally open it up to other public speakers.
Other public speakers can come forward if they'd like. Seeing none coming forward, I'm going to close it and...
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Marilyn, appreciate it.
And the, there were several, a couple of things added in the 2013 ordinance amendment. That was one, the removal of invasive plants was added, as well as allowing the relocation of planting, as well as the ability to purchase vacant property for the preservation of existing trees of significance. Those were added in 2013.
I didn't...
I can't give you any history because unfortunately, I was not here then.
It was I.
Now, again, I, if there is intent to do additional changes to this particular section, in order to not have a bunch of piecemeal ordinances making changes, that if they would like to see that a third option for developers to, like I said, what I understood her to say was to take a tree and move it to a city location or another location to be utilized further, my recommendation was to be to, I'm actually going to say, table this one today. Allow us to bring language that incorporates that option along with this language as one ordinance to proceed.
Don't we already have something to that effect? Where are we? L3, we're talking about off-site relocation of a tree or palm shall be approved, approved. Doesn't that pretty much cover it? Any associated costs with the relocation be borne by the applicant?
I believe in this case that they're trying to allow some of the costs to go to the city, but otherwise, yes, that does...
They want the city to help.
That is not true. Our...
Could you wait till you get to the microphone?
I'm sorry. We, the fund is city money. So, what we're trying to do is to say to a developer, rather than pay money into the fund, move the tree to this place. There's no city money involved.
At whose cost? At the developer's cost?
Yes.
Oh, that's already, that's already...
But it's already there.
Right.
As I, as I understand it, it's already there. There is a relocation provision...
Yes.
...as I understand it, which allows a developer to make that choice. All we're saying is, we want to be able to have the tree put somewhere where we can irrigate it before we offer it to somebody else, to keep it alive.
But wherever it's placed at, it has to remain there after that, doesn't it? It's not going to sit out in the...
Not necessarily.
You can sit out in somebody's, in a mall, a train park...
Well, no, no, it can't, but I mean, the point of it is, as you may know, we, for the centennial, in September, we planted 25 30-gallon trees, live oak trees, in 25 schools. Now, they're a pretty big tree, so obviously, we're not talking about a live oak that's 100 years old, but we are talking about certain specimen trees that people take away and almost discard because they're smaller. So we could move them, we could keep them alive, we could have a program offering those trees to someone else, but there's no cost in moving the tree to the city. The cost is borne by the developer the same way the cost would be borne by the developer to kill the tree and give us the money into the account.
So you would, so I understand this.
Mm-hmm.
A site's being developed, there's some trees that can be moved, you would need a holding area...
Right.
...for these trees.
That's right.
And the city would need to provide the holding area.
If we...
Because they got to go somewhere.
Not necessarily.
Well, let's look, let me look at the practical aspect of that.
Okay.
If I'm a developer, I'm going to move a tree and put it here, that's a cost. If I put it in the hole, I'm already completed the whole job. If I put it here, then I got to bring the machine back again to pick it up again, move it again, and put it in the hole again. I've just doubled my costs, and as a developer, I'd say, I'm not dealing with that, because I was a developer, okay?
Okay.
And therefore, if somebody else is going to pick it up once you put it in the site, and my job is just to dig it, bawl it, and set it on a piece of property, and you take it from there, no problem, I'm released of my liability at this point in time, that's fine, but the cost is double what it would be otherwise, and I didn't mean exactly double, but somewhat near that, because once you got on the truck and you got the crane there and you got everything, I'm talking bigger ones now, not little 30-gallon ones, okay?
Mm-hmm.
I mean, those I drag behind myself because I am a gardener, but, you know...
After hearing what she said, like I said, I'm not entirely understanding what she is asking for, so I think we could proceed with this ordinance as is. This question about how to better implement the Paragraph L and its requirements probably is, would probably need more discussion, may or may not need an ordinance change, but the irrigation, the language is the way it is, and keep in mind that this is city money, and ultimately, the City Council determines how the money is expended.
I have no problem with what you're asking for now, I really don't personally.
And I would say, let's, let's move what's in front of us.
I agree.
Thank you.
And then later on, if it gets tweaked out or whatever...
If you want something modified, we'll be glad to look at it.
Thank you so much.
I think, I think in general, we want to make sure you can work as effective as possible and do the best job for the city you can, and that's our only objective here, but we can't, we can't be in conflict with the comprehensive plan.
No.
We can't be in comprehensive for some other things, then we start getting ourselves into a sticky wicket.
When you're ready, I'll make the motion to move it forward.
Thank you very much.
And thank you, your work is very important to the city.
We appreciate it, we do.
Very important.
We have a lovely city.
We do.
Do we have any discussion among the panel members?
I just wanted to say that this L3 pretty well speaks to the, to the issue.
I thought so, too.
Yeah, but when I, when I look at L3, it doesn't really, that's not an alternative to the mitigation fund, it's just something that the developer's allowed to do. It doesn't say in, at least not in L3, that that would be an alternative, it just gives that possibility. In other words, the mitigation, you might have to still pay the mitigation into the mitigation fund, and you're just giving the tree to the city.
Well, there's another part of the code that's pertinent in that aspect, and that's actually up in 72.43A, which then says that, mitigation is not required for removal of any trees and palms successfully relocated onsite or offsite in accordance with the subsection L below.
Okay.
So, which means if they do pay, bear the cost, the developer bears the cost to relocate, then they don't pay into the fund.
Successfully is the word you want to watch out for, though. Successfully means the tree lives.
Yeah, it has to live with one year.
You got to give it one year.
That's where you're double dipping. The developer says, I could get hit twice.
And as staff, we've had some discussions about that in terms, yeah, the, and I think this provision hasn't, in reality, been used a lot because of the riskiness when you get to larger trees.
That's sad.
In my, my minimal life in gardening, I have always figured that the smaller the tree, the easier it grows, so that's always the risk when it's, you're trying to relocate a larger tree.
Yeah.
And they got one year.
Thank you for pointing that out, I didn't read the whole section, thank you.
You got one year to make it live.
That's about it. If there's no additional discussion, I'm looking for a motion.
I'll make the motion that we approve the ordinance that's before us, the ordinance of the City of Vero Beach, Florida relating to the Tree Replacement Fund.
A second.
We have our first and a second. You want to take the vote?
Mr. Dag?
Yes.
Mr. Kahoy?
Yes.
Mr. Lauer?
Yes.
Mrs. Manous?
Yes.
Mr. Lauffer?
Yes.
Passes 5 to 0.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Marilyn.
You're welcome.
Got it.
The next item is planning department matters. We have any?
The only thing I would just remind you, we will be having the, the next meeting on, I believe it'll be the January 24th, we'll be discussing the work plan for the year as a board.
And you'll have an outline for us on that or something?
I will have an outline, I am working on that currently.
And dates maybe, that we could work with?
In terms of, you mean like targeted dates when...
When these things can occur.
Yeah, I'll see what I can, a timeline.
Not maybe all of them, but we can...
Right.
We can plan things around it accordingly, okay? Anything else?
That's all.
Any, any quasi-judicial we need to be alert to?
The legislature is back in semi-session, they're doing committee meetings. There is a bill that is, that will impact zoning, it's about allowing or not allowing vegetable gardens in front yards. So, the legislature is weighing in on that one, so I will be following that one. We may, I haven't even looked at our code related to that, but it, they would prohibit us from not allowing vegetable gardens in front yards, is basically what it would do.
Some vegetables growing on vines make very pretty flower-looking things.
Well, no, it, what it, this is an interest, it's, there was a community down in South Florida that prohibited vegetable gardens in the front yard, and so this is the legislature's answer to that, is to preempt local governments from regulating that, how they want to regulate it.
It comes right before cleaning up little gagoons, so we'll move on.
[laughter]
Ridiculous. No wonder we waste a lot of money.
Oh, my lord.
Anything else, Mr. Jason?
No.
The board member matters, are there any there?
No, thank you.
Okay, then I believe we're ready for an adjournment, thank you.
Thank you.
Happy New Year, everybody.
Happy New Year.